I'd like to call the September 1st, 2021 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order at 6:30. Mr. Pinio, do we have need for a non-public? First item on the agenda, minutes of July 21st. Does anybody have any corrections or changes? I do. On the bottom of page two, the motion, I think it was to accept the donation in the amount of $14,000 for EV chargers. Am I correct, Brian?
Correct.
Okay. That's the one change I have. Does anybody have any other changes? Hearing none, I need a motion to accept.
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next, set of minutes, August 18th. Does anybody have any corrections or changes? Hearing none, I need a motion to accept as written.
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alrighty. Next item on the agenda, we have a series of public hearings. The first one is the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 1st, 2021, at their meeting, which starts at 6:30 PM in the Great Hall Town Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, for the acceptance of unanticipated funds in excess of $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95-B32 relative to unanticipated funds in the amount of $100,000 from the Friends of Pop Whalen for the purpose of engineering and architectural service for the expansion of the Pop Whalen Ice Arena at 390 Pine Hill Road. And I'll open up this public hearing. Do I have somebody who'd like to speak to it? Come to the microphone and please state your name for the record.
Good e- sorry, good evening. Victor Druin, Friends of Pop Whalen, I'm here with Kurt Devial, they're also on the board, and we're pleased to be working with the town and present the check for $100,000 for the money that would be used hopefully for the expansion of the current Pop Whalen facility. So we have a rendering over there that we produced last year, and look forward to working with you guys and getting this ready to go.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this public hearing? Hearing Suzanne?
I just have some concerns. Suzanne Ryan, there's a long history with this building, and the town has supported it overwhelmingly since 1986. And a big resource for this facility was the Back Bay Hockey Association. They are the ones that took what was just a pond of frozen ice and put a building around it. We're at the point now that we've put hundreds of thousands of dollars into it, and the town is going to be looking this year for a million and a half to go into it. And the Friends of Pop Whalen, I don't know if they call themselves Back Bay Hockey or what their actual title is under the 501(c)(3), but they're proposing to raise $2,212 and change. And I think that I would like to know more about their business plan, their timeline, the expansion to do specifically what? Do you as a board have any sort of letter of writing of, like the Libby, the memorandum of agreement or memorandum of understanding as to who's doing what or what percent? What the effect of the addition will have on the costs of operating the building? Or, in fact, if the expansion will bring in revenue, how will that offset? It's all well and good to say, here's $100,000, and we're going to do an engineering architectural plan, but I would like to see some detailed backup. In fact, it would have been nice to have a presentation from the town and the friends to say, this is what we're doing. We're asking for, the town's asking for, what did I say? A million and a half, and they're proposing $2 million. What's that going to get us? And what's it going to do for the town or to the town? And we don't have any of that tonight. So I would suggest that the board even consider, why don't we lease this building to the people that know how to run it? The people that actually go from ice rink to ice rink and manage it? Operate it, run it, and manage it. Back in, oh, when around '95, '96, Sue Glenn was the manager of the Fox and Rec, and she was an avid hockey enthusiast. And she had helped with the capital improvements, and the discussion was with the Board of Selectmen, well, maybe we need a sports authority. I believe there's such a thing allowed under state statute. To make the thing a success, to make it overwhelming success, if it was operated right and run right, it could be whether a tri-town facility, a cooperative facility, like schools have cooperative districts. None of this has been looked into. I don't object, certainly I'm not looking a gift tossed in the mouth for the money that they propose to do, but I don't see anything to support it. Now, Linda, you've been to their meeting, so you know some of the details. I haven't heard it discussed with the board in public. I haven't heard it discussed in detail tonight. So I would suggest that maybe you table accepting that funds tonight until you get some of these questions answered.
Okay, do I have anybody else in the audience who'd like to give some public feedback?
Hi, I'm Kurt Devialder. I'm the secretary of the Friends of Pop Whalen organization, and I am also the vice president of Back Bay Youth Hockey Association. Victor is the president of the Back Bay Youth Hockey Association. They are two separate entities. So I know that was one of the points that you brought up. This project is not, from our perspective, about operations. That's the town's purview. What we're doing here is proposing to take an aging facility and bring it into modern times so that it can continue to function to serve the community at large. What we have now is an aging hockey rink. What we want to turn it into is a modern hockey rink that is also available to be used for the other three seasons for the town's purposes. So that would include things like the town's portion of it, which is physical plant improvements, which would be the structural issues that prevent it from continuing for a long term, and also prevent it from being used in warm months. For example, it's too hot in there, so it needs to be insulated and dehumidified. And that will also have the benefit of reducing operating costs. That was a point that you brought up. So what we have is an uninsulated building that we're trying to keep ice in, in an ever-warming climate, and it's done through electricity. And by insulating the building that's presently uninsulated, what we would effectively be doing is driving down a major utility bill for the facility. So that's one of many benefits. I'd be happy to talk to you about this another time if you would like, or if you would like to attend one of our meetings, I could let you know when that is, and you'd certainly be welcome to do that. I don't know, there was a long list of things. I don't want to take up too much time here, but, you know, effectively what we have here is a gift for the town. This is not something that we are proposing to run. This is not something that we are giving our input as to how it should be run. The town runs it, and it's within the town's purview to continue to do that or not continue to do that as they see fit. What we are doing is putting together, we've put together a group that sees, because we are, like I said, at least some of us are hockey people, we see the issues present in the facility now, we see the problems that are coming in the future, and we see the deficiencies from a multi-use, multi-season optimization of the building, and we want to address that. We want to bring it to where it needs to be. The town's portion of it that you had addressed earlier, the $1.5 million item, is really to stabilize the building so they can continue to exist, serve the town, serve presently the children of the town, and as well as the adults who utilize it either for adult hockey or figure skating or whatever. But also, we want to make it a broader use. So that's what we're trying to do. I didn't have a pen, so I couldn't jot down notes while you were giving your list, but I'm trying to hit all the points. Are there things that I didn't get that you'd like me to address?
Thank you, Kurt. That's helpful. Do I have anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak?
Victor Druin again. The only thing I'd like to add to what Kurt had said was, the town had last year approved a sum in the warrant articles for engineering to harden the building. We knew the building had multiple issues, roof insulation and so forth, and the Friends approached the town and said, while we're doing this and while you're doing it, would there be a cost benefit if we funded the additional engineering work to make this really a four-season facility? So we are going above what's already been approved, so the engineering firm, Banwell, you know, gave us a price for that additional work, and that's what this $100,000. So this isn't to do work, this is to really do the feasibility and be able to come back to the town and say, this is our vision to get it there, and we've had input from a lot of people so far, and then how much will it be? Then we'll have real numbers to come back to CIP, and otherwise, we'd just really be shooting from the hip. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience? Suzanne, we're not going to get into back and forth. I'll take another comment, but we're not going to argue points here. Go ahead.
It brings me back to the point of, what do we have in writing for assurances that once we accept this $100,000, that it's going to go, that they are going to raise the funds necessary to put on the addition? We're banking on the town putting in a million and a half to upgrade the building, that in return, we will see an improvement of the gate, people paying to use the building because of the addition that they put on supposedly will increase the use of the building. And we don't, we just don't have anything in writing. You're just willing to accept $100,000 and say, well, this is wonderful, we'll see you in how many years? How long do they project before they raise their 2-point-something million dollars? When are we going to see that? I know that in one of these reports, it says that the work that we do will not interfere with the work they do, and that we're not paying for extra work to facilitate them putting on their addition, but I don't see anything in writing.
Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this?
Madam Chair, first.
I'll close the public hearing, and I'll go right on over to you. I'd like to close the public hearing. Mr. Pinio, would you like to address some of those issues?
Yeah, so we do have a memorandum of understanding in place regarding the $100,000, which the Friends of Back Bay have generously worked with us to continue the engineering and feasibility studies. That is in unison with the $125,000 that was raised and appropriated by the voters in March. Banwell, the architect that we're working with, will be completing a scope of work. That scope of work has been broken out into the phases which are town-related and the phases which are related to the expansion. This MOU that's in place now is specific to the $100,000, which the Friends of Pop Whalen are bringing forward. And you are correct, the way that Banwell is engineering this project, if it takes the Friends of Pop Whalen two years to appropriate their money, we as the town will be ready for 2022 to have a warrant article to upgrade the existing facility. But we don't know how long it may or may not take these people to raise their funds. This was supposed to come in front of you last year. However, we got down to the last days of preparing warrant articles, and it was decided that the number that we had was not the appropriate number. We could not get a locked-in number, and we felt that we needed to back up and do exactly what we're doing right now, which is working with the preferred architect to come to a reasonable solution to the building to be able to bring in front of the voters in March to decide on. I would anticipate that once we go forward and the Friends of Pop Whalen are able to raise their funds, I would assume that there would be another MOU in place related to those funds. But that all hinges on the timeframe that they have. That could be six months, that could be six years. We can't answer that at this point. That's why that has been left open-ended. But we do have the ability to repair the existing facility, which is in dire need of roof siding, insulation, to just make the place work, or we're going to lose the structure. That is a concern with the types of leaks that we are experiencing there. So the hopes are that by the time Banwell gets this project done, you will have more concrete numbers that will be able to hopefully answer the questions which you and the citizens have. Short of that, I think that I've tied up a couple of those loose ends, but this $100,000 which is coming forward is strictly for architectural and engineering work to continue for the expansion purposes exclusively.
Board members, anybody else have any comments? I'll make a comment, you know, I think a partnership is very important. Here we have a public-private partnership. The taxpayers and voters of this town, in Article 14 in 2021, approve $125,000 for architectural designs, which would take care of the existing building. The Friends of Pop Whalen wanted to design their locker room and addition, and we pooled our money together to get the job done. They're paying for theirs, the voters are paying for our portion. That's a good partnership. And the full plans are first going to the CIP with what we have right now, and by the time we get this to a warrant article, we should have cost figures and more accurate design, but this is to take money to help us get there. Any other board members? Any comments, questions? Alright. Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept this fund? And I think we have in our notes also the accounts that is going to go in. I switched the public hearing, so you're going to have to go to the second page of your notes. Would somebody like to, ah, Brian?
Motion to accept a cash donation from the Friends of the Pop Whalen in the amount of $100,000 to be used for engineering and architectural work for the Pop Whalen Ice Arena expansion. This donation will be booked to the donations, Pop Whalen, account number 05-35080-150. These services will be charged to Pop Whalen, other services, account number 05-45890-380, which will be funded by this donation.
Can I have a second to that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Do you want to hear that? And let's see if we can get a picture, because we're going to get money tonight, so we'll... We always take pictures. I'd like to open up the next public hearing. It is the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 1st, 2021, at their meeting, which will start at 6:30 in the Great Hall Town Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, for the acceptance of unanticipated funds in excess of $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95-B3A relative to unanticipated funds in the amount of $269,000 from the Friends of Abenaki for the expanded snowmaking at Abenaki Ski Area located at 39 Pine Hill Road. Do I have anybody who'd like to speak to this? Come on up and state your name.
Bill Swafield, Wolfboro, Friends of Abenaki. Linda, may I pass out a rough drawing of the proposal?
Sure.
Okay. As most of you know, we have snowmaking already at Abenaki, and we've had it since the early 2000s. We've grown from just having portable snowmakers to a main line of snowmaking pipe going up the rope tow, which services the main slope, the rope tow slope. We have three other trails that have no snowmaking on them, and the Friends have raised money to add snowmaking piping to those three trails, and that's why we're here tonight. The town employees who make the snow have had to expend a lot of energy dragging hoses through the woods over the last few years to get to those other trails that have no snowmaking. It's labor-intensive, and it's really hard work. If you make snow on the new Twister Trail, which is to the left of the main slope, you can't open the main slope because you're dragging hoses across the main slope to get over to Twister. So this will eliminate that problem. We'll be able to make snow on Twister. The main slope can be open already. You can make snow on the other two trails on the right of the rope tow going up the hill, looking up the hill, and have the other two trails open. There won't be any dragging of hose through the woods to those other trails anymore after this expansion is done. So we're just looking for approval from the town to move along with the project, and hopefully we'll get better snow sooner and more of it, so there won't be any problems melting early. We'll be in good shape, with hopefully less labor-intensive town expenditures, too.
Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this, accepting this gift? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, does anybody have any questions or concerns? I'll make a motion to accept the cash donation from the Friends of Abenaki in the amount of $269,000 to receive in two payments to be used for the expanded snowmaking at Abenaki Ski Area. This donation will be booked as donations miscellaneous. This donation will be booked as donations miscellaneous, account number 01-35080-150. This project will be charged to the Friends of Abenaki, expenses, account number 12-52000-383, which will be funded by this donation. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Do you have a check, too?
I don't. I already gave you a check for part of that.
Do you want to just take a piece of paper and shake his hand, and so we...
I suppose so.
I like those meetings where we accept money. All right. I'd like to open up the next public hearing. It's the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the Friends of the Libby Museum to host the annual MUM fundraising sale from September 3 through 5, 2021, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Libby Museum of Natural History. Do I have somebody who'd like to speak to that? Come on up, state your name for the record.
Lynne, Friends of the Libby. It's our third annual event, and it's a very popular one. We always, we've been getting people asking, "Are you going to do the MUMs again?" So we just like to have the permit, so we can just help raise money for the general fund for the Libby, and for the Friends of the Libby to do help with programs for the Libby.
Well, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this permit? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. As I've heard, most years you sell out in a very short...
Yes. So some may not be a guarantee.
Yeah. Yeah. I've driven over, and there'll be nothing left, so... Board members, does anybody have any questions or concerns? Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
Make the motion to issue a temporary event permit to the Friends of the Libby Museum to host the annual MUM's fundraising sale from September 3 through 5, 2021, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Libby Museum of Natural History.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. I'd like to open up the next public hearing, the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for Wolfboro Park and Recreation to host the Fall Festival on September 25, 2021, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Foss Field Pavilion. Do I have somebody to speak to this permit?
Hi, Christine Collins, Parks and Rec Director. Yes, so this is an event that we've done numerous years. We actually hosted it at Abenaki, but we decided to move it to Foss Field two years ago. We just felt like it was a centralized location, and we did get a lot more people popping in and seeing what was going on. This year, we collaborated with the Kingswood Youth Center, so they're going to do their Chili Challenge in conjunction. We do have some vendors we're having, not food vendors, but people who make items and stuff are signing up to do things. We've done that before. And we actually have Animal Encounters is coming to do a show, and we're having music and games and arts and crafts, so it should be a fun family event. So we're trying to grow it every year to make it like a fall festival.
Well, thank you. Do I have anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this permit? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Board members, does anybody have any questions? Hearing none. Can somebody give me a motion?
Make the motion to issue a temporary event permit to Wolfboro Parks and Recreation to host the Fall Festival on September 25, 2021, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Foss Field Pavilion, permit number 2021-48.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? You have your permit. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comments, three minutes per person, not to exceed 15
Zian Ryan again. I don't have a paper agenda, but I believe on the agenda is some item relevant to a contest regarding the name of Pop Whalen. Did I see something to that effect?
No, it's just the naming of different parts in the building, and like the library, and we say, okay, somebody gives a million could name the building.
I don't understand what your goal is.
It's to allow them to use parts of the building to raise money. They did that at the library.
The library or the Pop Whalen?
No, I'm saying it's similar to what they did at the library. There's the Bradley Room. People give X amount of money to have their name on a certain part of the building.
Oh, it's not to change the name Pop Whalen?
No.
No. Any other public comment? Hearing none. We'll move on over to the bulk vote. We have the weekly manifest of August 20. It is $333,411.79. August 27 is $288,490.81. We have also an intent-to-cut permit. Does anybody have any issues with the bulk vote? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to accept?
Go on.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? We have no board appointments, so the first item on our agenda is Warren Muir going to give us the assessing committee's water testing results of 2020.
Well, thank you. Again, I'm Warren Muir from Wolfboro, and speaking to our activities dealing with water quality across our lakes as part of the Wolfboro Waters Committee. We have prepared a report that should be on our website that provides, is in much greater detail and provides the underlying data. So I'm not going to go into that detail for you. And there was a similar report last year in 2019 that presented the data as of 2019. But I thought with a couple of new selectmen and seeing as how it's been three years now since an event that changed things for us, that I would summarize briefly what's happened over the three years and what we think we know and what we think we're attempting to do here in the future. So if you would go to the next slide, please. Up until August of 2018, our various lake associations, in conjunction either with UNH or with New Hampshire DES, had a whole series of volunteers collecting water samples and making observations and providing the samples to UNH and DES to assess the water quality. The samples were done primarily in the deepest locations of our lakes and done during the summer months. And the analyses indicated that in general, our lakes had pretty good water quality, and there had been no cyanobacteria blooms in any of our lakes except Mirror Lake, which experienced over the years a number of blooms. But those, the sources of nutrients to Mirror Lake were already being addressed, and input was being reduced. And the biggest issue there with Mirror Lake was the extent that nutrients already were present in the lake. On the other hand, what was being observed in our lakes was increased biological growth on the bottom and biological activity. Next slide, please. While we thought the lakes were very good water quality, we had a bloom of cyanobacteria, type of cyanobacteria called Gleotrichia, in Winter Harbor at the end of August. And this is a picture of what it looked like on September 5. And that bloom was a surprise to us, given what the measurements were saying in the water. And it was the first that we had in one of Passaki or other lakes. But as a result of that, New Hampshire DES issued an advisory advising people to avoid contact with the water, that for people, for pets, and for drinking and recreation, that lasted over three weeks, including the Labor Day weekend that year. And the concern isn't so much for the bloom itself, but any toxin that might be released by the bloom. But we didn't find out until, really after, I think it was after Thanksgiving, that we got any results that indicated, well, yes, the Gleotrichia did release toxins, in fact, two of them, but the concentrations of the toxins were not a human health concern. But we found that out way at the end of the year. And at the end of the year, the Board of Selectmen decided that we ought to take a closer look at our conditions with a focus on cyanobacteria, and established a cyanobacteria task force. Now, if I could get the next slide. I'm part of the assessment activities, and this is not a research activity. We're not interested in publications. We're interested in answering questions that will inform action. We know that the measurements that we were making, I mean, they're important measurements that have been ongoing over the years, but they are not sufficient for us to assess the risks of cyanobacteria blooms. And so we're trying to figure out, well, what physical, biological, and chemical conditions need to be measured in order to, that are indicative of good water quality or indicative of risks of cyanobacteria or other degradation of our lakes? Which cyanobacteria pose threats when and where? And, let's see, have I gone... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Next slide, please, Jim. Yeah. Okay. Which cyanobacteria posed the threats, when and where? What information can we collect to help inform priorities for taxpayer-funded activities and for private actions to help preserve the water quality that we have and to be prepared for future cyanobacteria blooms? And then, how can people be informed when and how to act in the event that there is a cyanobacteria bloom? So we're trying to answer practical questions and not esoteric academic research questions. Our next, underlying our efforts, since that bloom, the number of people, there was already a great number of people doing volunteering, but it's significantly expanded. There are a lot of people who care about our lakes. They were coming to water summits and asking how they can participate. And we expanded the number of people, locations, timing, and number of water quality measurements. We have expanded and recruited people with a variety of important skills that have joined Wolfboro Waters. And Wolfboro Waters may have a little budget in the town's thing, but there's an awful lot of activity and energy and people involved in that. Next is, over the years, we have acquired some important laboratory equipment and supplies, and have been putting them to use. Plus, a number of us have other equipment and supplies that we're making available and that we either own individually or that have been loaned to us. So there's actually quite a bit of additional capability that we've been able to muster. We've also had just an invaluable amount of expertise and training and cyanobacteria-specific analytical supplies and capabilities from the Bigelow Laboratory, which is in Maine, but has very capable senior scientists with interests that include microbes like cyanobacteria, one of whom grew up in this area. And so it gives them a great opportunity to come back and visit his folks. But for a small annual grant of $5,000 to them, we are getting many fold times in excess back from them. It's just been wonderful. We've also greatly increased our work, working closely with New Hampshire DES scientists and UNH scientists, and they've been very helpful. And finally, we've developed a network of contacts of experts elsewhere, organizations, lake associations, US EPA, the Cyanobacteria Monitoring Collaborative, professional groups, meetings, water associations, and so forth, that has been very helpful in sharing knowledge and letting us know of important, relevant events and so forth. And so, over the last three years, Wolfboro Waters has built knowledge and capability and network, and is using that in conjunction with our lake associations. And I should say, we're starting to work well with our lake associations collaboratively. So, next slide, please. In 2019, we trained 80 people locally in cyanobacteria investigation, identification, and established a protocol for what should you do in the event that you think you may see a cyanobacteria bloom. And that's worked pretty well over the years. I mean, there have been a number of suspected sightings and so forth, and the protocol has worked well. We've recruited more volunteers and expanded the number and location, and in the months that we've been doing water sampling. And we have identified laboratories that'll be able to give us tests of the toxins in the event of a bloom, so that we don't have to wait until Christmas to find out that back in the summer, the bloom did or didn't have toxins of concern. So we've identified, including Bigelow Labs, that can get us results very much quicker than that on whatever toxin... than that on whatever toxin we need to be analyzing for. We found evidence that stormwater runoff is the leading source of added nutrients to Winter Harbor and is likely the leading source, a category of source, of nutrients entering our other lakes. And that, and that most of the nutrients, or the largest number, amount of nutrients, are being added in the spring and the fall, not when we've been measuring it in the summer. And then, we went and collected a bunch of data to try and support the ongoing watershed management plan that was in One of Passaki, covering Molten Borough Bay and Winter Harbor. And so we were active with that. And next slide, please. Now, in 2020, we expanded our assessment committee to incorporate a number of other people who bring valuable perspectives and involved Bigelow more actively. That's when we gave them the first grant, their senior scientist, and involved DES more actively. It's been very helpful. New Hampshire DES has been analyzing a number of our samples and getting back to us and reviewing a number of our findings to see whether they are in keeping with their understanding. The belief has been that phosphorus is the key element controlling the amount of biological growth in our lakes. Now, nitrogen is another possible one, but we've taken measurements that basically confirm that phosphorus is the nutrient that we need to focus upon, because there's plenty of nitrogen in our lakes, far in excess of what would be needed. Additions of phosphorus lead to additions in biological growth and aging of our lakes. With the assistance of the Bigelow Labs, we studied the phosphorus and the organic concentrations in Winter Harbor in the sediment. And the reason why we did that is because gliotrichia, again, remember, we were measuring the phosphorus in the water on the very day the bloom was occurring. And it said, boy, things are not only good, they were very good. And so, we decided we better take a look at the phosphorus in the sediment, especially because gliotrichia, this particular cyanobacteria, lives most of the time in the sediment. And so with the help of Bigelow, we were able to do a variety of measurements. That little thing in the corner there are what we call Bentick flow chambers that Bigelow made, manufactured, they made in the lab, six of those, and they've got little spigots on the top, and you stick those into the, deep into the sediment, and you leave them in place over the summer, and you're taking samples and collect that and freeze it quickly. And then they analyzed it for three different types of phosphorus in the sediment. And between the two, we found that there's quite a large amount of phosphorus in three different forms in the sediment. Next slide, please. We tried to figure out how to best track the biological progression in our lakes. And we've tried, we've been trying drone photography, GoPro photography. We do direct observations, you know, from our docks. A number of us have certainly witnessed in our own localities the change over the years. And we certainly have been observing increased mud and slime and green algae and plants and found what we were calling affectionately cotton candy that is evidently metafitin. And you can see the fuzzy ball that was, that are about this big, that, you know, will roll around underneath the water, that grow over the summer. We analyzed the metafitin, and it is not itself cyanobacteria, but cyanobacteria can get caught up in it. But in 2020, while there were blooms all over New Hampshire and 25 different cyanobacteria advisories put out by New Hampshire DES, fortunately, there were none in Wolfboro. Now, next slide, please. With the assistance of the senior scientist, actually, our local senior scientist is the biologist specialist, microbiologist specialist at Bigelow, and with the cyanobacteria lead at New Hampshire DES, we were able to identify at least, well, maybe eight or nine different cyanobacteria that are present in our waters. And identified five or six that would be good to track. If we can't take our measurements that we were doing in the past in the water column to assess, and, you know, that says everything's great when it isn't. If we can measure the cyanobacteria directly in real time, then we have, we most certainly have a valuable measure. And Bigelow Labs identified for us a portable device, and you can see, I put it in my hand and took that photo, so you can see the size of this thing. And in it, there are the ability to analyze nine samples simultaneously. And it takes, it takes an hour or more to extract a sample and prepare it for this. And then it takes about an hour for this to give you your results. And so by the, at the end of 2020, we used the available budget to buy one of those, which we have. Okay. Next slide, please. So, in 2021, we've further expanded the participation, and we did not in the past have samples from Sergeant's Pond, and so now they've been collected, and we will get analyses by the end of the year from Sergeant's Pond. And in conjunction with our various lake associations, we've collected a series of samples to be able to do the type of DNA analysis that Bigelow does itself, or the type of analysis that we will be able to do ourselves in each of our lakes and compare what we're finding in our various lakes with what we're measuring in Winter Harbor. To see, I suspect that there's an awful lot of similarity if they aren't identical, but we will be, we're collecting those samples and we will have those results, you know, in the coming weeks. With Bigelow Lab and DES, we went and identified five or six cyanobacteria that we can monitor or are planning to monitor and track. Now, we've done the extraction, I mean, we've done, we've done the collection, we've got samples. We have not extracted them, and we have not yet run the PCRs on anything other than for gliotrichia, because Bigelow Lab is making sure that they've got the, you know, the sequences out of the literature are correct, and they're trying to make as specific sequences as possible, and will be providing us with cyanobacteria-specific reagents for each of these, three of them, for each of these. And they will also be providing us with some standards against which we'll measure. And so it'll include gliotrichia, of course. It'll include planktrix, which is one of the cyanobacteria that has been blooming in Mirror Lake. It will include microcystis, which is the most common cyanobacteria blooming in New Hampshire. Dolchus sperman, which we did observe a brief bloom in 2019 in Winter Harbor, and it was the subject of a bloom in Mirror Lake this year. And one or two pico cyanobacteria that we did not know was present, but we were measuring the presence of, the signals indicating the presence of cyanobacteria, looking under the microscope and not seeing any of the big cyanobacteria, only these little tiny dots. And it turns out that there are what they call pico cyanobacteria that are like 1/100 the size of the surface-blooming cyanobacteria, but ones that can still put out toxins. And we believe we actually have a significant amount of pico, and we're trying to make sure that we measure the most significant one or two of those with our, this year. Again, we've collected the samples, it's just a question of then analyzing them. Next slide, please. So far, there has been a bloom in Mirror Lake that, which required a New Hampshire DES advisory that lasted 10 days in August. Next slide, please. In Lake Wentworth and in Lake One Passaki, gliotrichia was seen again, and this is a picture of gliotrichia that we collected in Winter Harbor this year, but not in concentrations that were high enough to warrant a bloom. And so, New Hampshire DES issued a warning telling people to look out for gliotrichia and to report a bloom if people see it. And I would mention that the gliotrichia that was observed in Wolfboro Waters this year appeared to be higher in Lake Wentworth than in Winter Harbor. But so far, we have not had any cyanobacteria blooms in other than Mirror Lake. And, next slide. I'm happy to answer any questions. I received a picture about half an hour before I was coming here from Bigelow, and they took a picture of what they call citizen science, and it was a picture of the New Hampshire DES lead person on cyanobacteria and three of our committee members being trained by Bigelow Lab on my porch, you know, with our device and with all the pipettes and things, including the pipettes that were bought with the donation that was made anonymously to support our work. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does any board member have any questions? I want to thank you, Warren, and your assessing committee for all of their work and the number of water tester volunteers that we've had over this year, and to Abigail Adams for overseeing them and all. We're very lucky to have you and the volunteers giving this kind of information, so thank you. All righty. Next item on the agenda is the memorandum of understanding with the Lake One Passaki Association. Mr. Town Manager, you want to take that?
Yeah, so there's been an ongoing discussion with the Wolfboro Waters Committee in conjunction with Lake One Passaki Association about a memorandum of understanding which would authorize fundraising to take place for the Wolfboro Bay watershed management plan. The memorandum of understanding would allow all that money that they raise to go directly to the Lake One Passaki Association, so that it can pay for the Wolfboro Bay watershed study. This has been reviewed by the Lake One Passaki Association, has been reviewed by local legal counsel, and it works in unison with the members of the fundraising committee and Pat Tarpe from the Lake One Passaki Association. So basically, all we need to do is authorize the signing of this MOU.
And I just want to add that the Lake One Passaki Association has a special designated fund just for the money raised for the Wolfboro Bay watershed plan. Winter Harbor, we were able to get a 319 grant from New Hampshire DES. New Hampshire DES no longer will give grants for the watershed management plan. We're going to call this an environmental study. They're trying to change the name, but that's really what's taking place here. And it is a very positive step forward in trying to look at Wolfboro Bay and the sources of runoff into it, so in the future, we may be able to get some 319 money to do solutions. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Concerns? Okay. With that, can I have a motion?
To make the motion to move to authorize the town manager to sign the memorandum of understanding between the Lake One Passaki Association and the town of Wolfboro, date of August 19, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is permission to hang ribbons on trees on Main Street. Do I have somebody to speak to that? Come on up, state your name for the record.
Yes, you do. Hi, good evening. Jim Shannon from Wolfboro. I come before you this evening to get your approval of my wife's proposal to hang yellow ribbons on various trees on town property to honor the military. And I have a, may I approach the bench, please?
Sure.
I just handed you two letters, one from my wife, which was her proposal to do this, and I have one from Representative, State Representative Duchesne. If you don't mind, I'd like to read them.
That would be good.
This is from my wife, Libby. Dear Wolfboro Board of Selectmen, I am seeking permission to display yellow ribbons from a few trees located on town of Wolfboro property. The tradition of using a yellow ribbon dates back to middle 1800s. According to American folklore, women started wearing yellow ribbons to symbolize the desire for a loved one to return home safely from travels of war. Many of us can also recall a flurry of yellow ribbons waving around trees and light posts during the Iran hostage crisis in '79. During this crisis, Pen Langen, the wife of Bruce Langen, a State Department Foreign Service Officer, Foreign Service Officer, sorry, was asked what Americans could do to show support for the hostages. She replied, "Tell them to do something constructive, because we need a great deal of patience. Just tell them to tie a yellow ribbon around the old oak tree." Comes from the National Museum of American Diplomacy, 2021. The tradition was also revived to support American men and servicewomen who were deployed during the Persian Gulf War. I feel especially vital to bring this show of support once again into the forefront of our civic response to an American crisis. On August 26, 2021, during the withdrawal of troops in Afghanistan, 13 service members were killed and 20 more were injured in a deadly explosion. Of the injured, 18 were airlifted to Germany to receive medical care, some of which were be a heartfelt show of support for our U.S. troops and allies who have given so selflessly to ensure our safety. Wolfboro is home to several veterans as well as families with children who served or are serving in this honorable capacity. I would like to place them on a tree in front of the Clark Museum, the Town Hall, Tate Park, Lakeview Cemetery, and possibly a few at the entrance of the Bridge Falls path. I will make sure the display looks neat, does not block views, or cause a safety issue. I will also remove them after an appropriate amount of time, which I believe would be when all Americans have safely returned home from the hospital in Germany and those who are awaiting evacuation are retrieved. However, I will leave that time up to you as selectman. Thank you for your consideration, Elizabeth A. Shannon. And the second letter from Representative Duchesne. Dear Wolfboro Board of Selectmen, I am writing to give my enthusiastic support for Mrs. Elizabeth Shannon's current initiative. Mrs. Shannon would like to place yellow bows in some of the Wolfboro's common spaces. At its broadest, the display of yellow ribbons or bows signifies homefront support for American military personnel. At its most personal, it represents the hope that a loved one participating in a distant conflict or posted abroad will return safe and sound. I would like to encourage you to support her mission, encouraging friends, neighbors, businesses, and our local government to recognize the atrocities in Afghanistan and our lost service members as a noble cause. Again, this past week, 13 members of our armed forces were killed in a terror attack while evacuating other U.S. service members, U.S. citizens, diplomats, NATO allies, Afghan allies, and refugees. This is not to mention the over 2,400 American soldiers who made the ultimate sacrifice fighting terrorism abroad, so we would never experience it at home. Our community should embrace Mrs. Shannon's initiative with open arms. We should help, or at the very least, not hinder her efforts. Under NHRS A Chapter 41, our Board of Selectmen has the authority to regulate town roads and commons. As previously mentioned, Mrs. Shannon would like to place these bows in public spaces and hope the Board will allow her and other veterans to continue. These yellow bows will not hinder people's sight, movements, or safety. They are not unsightly either. They are quite beautiful and would temporarily enhance the character of our town. In my earnest opinion, these bows would reflect very positively upon our community. It would allow our visitors and residents to know that we care about our military personnel and veterans. It would also show everyone that we care about significant events outside of our community, build community locally, and foster national community. Additionally, these bows will reflect upon best aspects of our town. I appreciate your consideration. Brody Duchesne, Representative Brody Duchesne, Carroll County, Wolfboro, New Hampshire. This is an example. Yeah, that will be tied or hung from some of the light posts and/or oak trees, maple trees, whatever's available.
Thank you very much for bringing this to us and reading it for your wife, and thank her for being willing to do something like this, putting the bows up and to take care of them. That is great. So, board members, can anybody else have any comments, comments or questions for Jim? Hearing none. Can I have a motion? Somebody want to give me a motion?
Move to grant permission to Elizabeth Shannon and any veteran to hang yellow ribbons on town trees from Clark Plaza to Merritt Village Savings Bank, or maybe an expanded area, from 27th of August until all service members who fought and served in Afghanistan are home safe.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is construction of poles wires on a Class 6 road, North Line Road.
Did my wife schedule my appointment at this? Good evening. Barry Muccio, Director of Operations for the Electric Department. I have been approached by a property owner, Mr. Keneilson, to construct approximately 500-foot power line on the Classics portion of North Line Road, which is actually beyond the water treatment facility. On its face alone, relatively simple project, three poles. I think we can keep them all in the town right-of-way. The thing I struggle with a bit with this one is normally when we get a Class 6 road construction request, there is a building permit associated with it, and that building permit allows the Building and Codes officials to have the once-over on the whole process. In this case, there is an existing camp. Been there probably over 80 years at this site, and so that is the structure which we are being asked to connect power to. Therefore, there's not necessarily been the permit review process for construction by our Building and Codes Department. Now, we've had some internal talks, town manager, town planner, in regards to our plan on this one. So, my original request tonight, it is the Board's authority to first grant permission to construct poles and wires on any town road that's a new pole line. So that ultimately is your request here. I think in internal conversations we've had, there may need to be a discussion in regards to waivers, which would normally be in place for construction on a Classics road. Because he's requesting electrical, there will be an electrical permit pulled. So, Jim, perhaps you could add some?
Yeah, it's my understanding from Director Planning that at that point, once an electric permit is pulled, we would have to come in front of the Board and in conjunction with the property owner, we have that waiver put in place, authorized process to -- that's my understanding of the trigger point. To get the waiver in place is the moment that he comes in and applies for that.
What waiver are you talking about? A waiver to?
A waiver for?
Liability?
Have that electrical service in that facility off of that Class 6 road.
Okay. And my other question is, we have a cabin there, and we'll run into this before. There are little hunting cabins off in the woods all over this town, and there are no permits or no building permits for a Class 6 road. So is this waiver waiving the liability?
Yes. It would be waiving the liability on the town and placing it exclusively on the property owner where we may not be able to get to them in the event of an emergency because it is on a Class 6 road.
And I know when we do it on a Class 6 road, I believe that has to be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. We're going to record this one?
Yes. I did actually do some research in Boulder downstairs and through the registry. There is not one on file for this particular tax.
Does anybody else have any questions or concerns about this?
Yeah, I guess one question I have is, I'll go through here quickly. Barry, who would be bearing the cost of this? Would the lot owner be bearing the cost of the installation?
It would be totally on the property owner for the bearing of the cost.
Correct. How about future maintenance, like trimming and stuff like that? Would that come back onto your budget?
Once we build it, we own it, so it's ours for maintenance after that. Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's typical of any line in town. It's owned by us. Now, you know, basically, I'm coming to you for the pole and wire approval, and I don't know if we can approve that conditionally on the waivers being in place, or are we putting the cart before the horse here? This is sort of new to me since it's a pre-existing structure. And also, I think I've made it relatively clear that, you know, the approval of the poles and wires would not necessarily, you know, facilitate future approvals of whatever plans Mr. Keneilson has for the property. It's standalone in its nature.
Right.
I have a question for Jim. In the future, if he goes to expand that building, does he have to go through getting a building permit on a Class 6 road so it'll come back to us at that point, too?
It would have to come. It's my understanding, any permit that would be pulled, that location would have to come back to the Board for authorization to be a Class 6 policy.
Okay.
Which is under RSA 67441. So, the more that he does on that property, he's going to have to come back through the process and come to the Board.
So, what Barry's asking us is to approve the extension of new poles and wires on this Class 6 portion of North Line Road contingent upon receiving a waiver. Is that what you're?
I'm assuming that's the only, could be the only conditional. The waiver would be subject to?
The electrical permit.
67441 or whatever permit you may need to pull, even going down the road in the future. So, yeah, we have this pole location plan. This is how we license our poles. It's something we use with DOT. It's something I've used with the Board here as well. So ultimately, this is the form that I am requesting signatures upon. I don't know what your pleasure is if we do that contingent upon seeing those waivers. I haven't even actually read the waivers. I'm not sure what they are, but.
So, we're authorizing?
So basically, you're authorizing, there's four poles there. There's really three that are in the right-of-way. You're authorizing those three poles as numbered with the appropriate distance from the traveled way and the spans, et cetera. That's all you're licensing in this form.
So, we should make a motion to approve the pole location on the August 26 proposal that you were giving us today in our package?
That is my request, correct.
Contingent upon the waiver?
Contingent upon the waivers and the understanding that permits would need to be pulled for whatever.
I would note RSA 67441.
RSA 67441.
And that is referenced in the New Hampshire Travel Roadways Guide Lines.
Okay, I'll add that to my.
67441, correct.
Do we need to include in the motion at the expense of the homeowner or the property owner?
I mean, that's typical of all our work. I mean, you could add it, but we, I mean, that's going to be the case regardless.
If they want the poles, that's what. So I think that if we do that, do the motion that it's the poles on this form related to 67441 contingent upon a waiver.
Correct.
Right? Is that it? So I move that, and I would say, second that. Is there any further discussion? Anybody else have any comments or questions? Yep.
Mr. Keneilson would like to, perhaps you could shed some lights on his future intentions there.
Okay.
My name's Dan Keneilson, and I actually live in Merritt, New Hampshire. This track is Lot 527. It's about 150 feet from the neighbor's driveway, which he also is on the road. I spoke with the building inspector on Monday about this, just so that he was informed of what we were trying to do. This property's been in the family since 1958. My wife summoned here. It's her doing that wants to do this work, not necessarily mine. She's looking to put electricity into the property. She would like to have electricity, water, and septic. So we'll be going for a septic plan as well. We're not looking to make this a year-round house at this time. There's no intention of that. It's simply bringing power into a camp that she can use, family members will use. We know we have to pay for the power to come into the property. We have that. We won't be pulling an electrical permit right-of-way because in talking with the building inspector, we're doing a meter on the pole, and until we actually bring power to the camp, and that's what this is, a camp, until we bring power to the camp, there is no electrical permit to be pulled. So theoretically, Barry can run the power, hook up to the meter, set a meter. We can run drop cords, extension cords, if you will, to the camp. That's what we're looking to do, eventually get water into the camp and to get a septic system there. The place now has an outhouse on the property. He doesn't want to use the outhouse no more. So, that's really what the goal is here. Didn't realize it was going to be a little bit to do to get the power there, but obviously it is what it is, and we understand that. Thank you.
I could just make one correction. We do actually require electrical permit on private property, even though it's on our pole. So, you know, that, I think everybody needs to be aware of that, that that may, in fact, permit requirement. Yeah.
But if we do this, you guys can take care of him getting a permit and everything. So we have that motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. You have your permit for your poles.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the agreement, agreement to disband the municipal, inter-municipal agreement for the provisions of the aquatic nuisance plant control between the town of Tuftonborough and Wolfboro. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about this? The Joint Board, is what we called it, was established in 2010 as a way to address the high costs of removing mill foil in Back Bay and in Tuftonborough, and at that time Moltenborough. The Joint Board bought two dash units, and for quite a number of years, each town hired their own contractors to pull the mill foil. As time went on, all the contractors bought their own boats, and there were no longer any contract who wanted to use the Joint Board's boats. The last boat was sold in January of this year. Since the main purpose of the Joint Board was to maintain the dash boats, there is no longer a need for the Joint Board, and this agreement is the solution of that Joint Board. So, does any member of the Board have any questions or concerns? Hearing none. Can somebody have, make me a motion?
I'll move to authorize the Board of Selectmen Chairman to sign the agreement to disband the intermunicipal agreement for the provisions of aquatic nuisance plant control between the towns of Tuftonborough and Wolfboro effective July 29 of 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? Do we, I guess, was it the 29th? Is it because that was the day we voted it?
Yeah.
Okay. All righty. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All righty. Go on. Next item, Lakes Region Model Railroad Update.
Good evening, Board. John Sims from the Lakes Region Model Railroad Museum. The project has been going remarkably well. We did have about a month of delay during July and early August because the painters couldn't finish painting the building, and they had to do that before we could do anything else. The weather got in the way. But the El Chap and Town-funded Phase 1 of the project should be wrapping up late September, early October. The two primary activities left are to build the handicap ramp. We brought the foundations in. We brought the foundations in and they're in place. And to rebuild the loading dock. Once those two things are done, there's some minor cleanup stuff, but essentially, the building has then been rehabilitated. And that concludes the contract with Elchip and the Town Capital Reserve that was matching funds for Elchip. Currently, there is about $7,500 left in the Capital Reserve, very close to that. And we will be working on that before the work is done. So the, so Phase 1 will be concluded. Phase 2, which is the internal construction, is under active discussion. We need to have the stewardship agreement in place, which is between the Town, Elchip, and the museum. And a draft of that is in Elchip's hands. They're reviewing it. But the subsequent internal work will be subject to the stewardship agreement. And we have designs for what we're wanting to do. Those will be presented to the Town and to the, to Elchip through the stewardship agreement for their review. We do have agreement from everybody to, to build the floor throughout the whole building, to put in an elevated insulated floor. So once we have that done, then we can open it up for public access. The Phase 3, which is the building of the museum, is under very active discussion right now. We have, we, we, the museum will have a very detailed, elaborate, impressive HO scale layout around the walls. And that layout will have historical narratives that will be triggered by smartphones and QR tags in the displays so that there will be a, a very strong historical narrative element to the museum. There will also be the opportunity for anybody to go into the museum and drive a train. And I think that is going to be a feature of the museum that will distinguish it from most other museums and all that I have encountered, where your seven-year-old grandson can go in and be given a throttle and he will get an app on his smartphone, if you've allowed him to have a smartphone. And he can then go and drive a train around. And if he's seven, he'll drive it around in a fairly limited area and do limited things. But if he's 17, he will be able to take his smartphone and go and create a train, hook up boxcars, pick them from different places in the layout, deliver them to other parts of the layout, just like a real railway did. So this is the image we are working towards. We think it's going to be extremely impressive. We are looking for all sorts of support to help us make it happen. We're strengthening our board and we're on the way. And thanks to the Town and the voters who have supported this all along, I think we're going to have quite a remarkable event downtown. So any questions or thoughts or comments?
Thank you very much for updating us on that museum. We'd like to hear from you.
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is naming opportunities. Other 501(c)(3) nonprofits that have been working with the Town to redo a facility has come in and asked whether the board could support them naming different parts of the building. I know one of the ones we laugh about all the time is you can name the penalty box or the Zamboni referee room. And they're still working on all the different things that they might be able to get somebody to give them a significant amount of money and have that area named. And I told them I would bring it to the board and get consensus or get, I think we'll probably need a vote to allow them to name the different areas. And when they have finished the, their proposal, I will have it sent out to the board. So can I have a motion to allow the Pop Whalen, Friends of Pop Whalen, to put together naming opportunities?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in, oh, there we go.
The only thing I see on this list that I not agree with is the building. I think it should be always known as the Pop Whalen Arena and not be renamed to some other name on the building.
I don't think they were planning to rename it and the name on the building. It, there is one for the building, but I don't, I will check to make sure. My understanding is it would still be Pop Whalen Arena and then the person's name somewhere is underneath that. Jim, did you have clearer understanding?
Yeah, the only thing that I would say to that, there was a question, if somebody came forward with the full $3.3 million for the upgrade, is there an opportunity to rename it for that? And I, my response was that would be a conversation that I think we would have to have with the full board.
So I'll take it back to them that we do not want no naming of the building if it takes away from Pop Whalen.
Correct.
Does that agree everybody? Does that make sense? Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and that is including not naming the building. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. I will take that back to them, that you don't want another name on there. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the review of the Town Manager's Evaluation Form. I had this sent out to you. It's one that we had used for quite a number of years now. I didn't know if there was any question or format that we want to change at this particular time. Does anybody have any, the thing they want to change? All right, so the next thing we need to do is to decide the timing of when we want to do the evaluation. As I recall, we're supposed to get it done by the beginning of October. I was wondering if the board would agree that everybody fills out their form and email it to me by the 15th. Then I will collate them all. The board can meet in non-public after our meeting on the 22nd, review the evaluation forms, and then meet with Jim on October 6th. Does that work for everybody? That feel we can get that done in that timeframe? Or would somebody like a little more time?
October 15th, you said?
September 15th.
September 15th.
Yeah. And then we would meet September 22nd since we have two board meetings in a row there. Everybody, that's okay? All righty. Final item on the agenda is the proposed Board of Selectmen review schedule. Anybody have any issue? I'm assuming on September 22nd, when they're talking, when she says Town Managers, you're going to do some introduction?
Yeah, I'm going to hopefully be able to present a draft budget at that point.
Okay, this is a draft budget?
That's the hope.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to other business. Does anybody have any other business? Brian?
Yes, I happened to run into Carrie outside in the parking lot after a meeting. And we talked a little bit about the Libby Museum. I then had a discussion with John and Carrie together and told them that a problem that I have with going forward with the Libby is not being able to know that donors are really there. So through our discussions, I ended up finding out that they have a donor who has an account with JP Morgan, a specific account, a charitable contribution account with a million dollars in it that is planned for the Friends of the Libby Museum. I said, well, how, how can we be certain that this is going to come to fruition? And through John, he's going to be working on getting a representative from JP Morgan to sit in either with Zoom or in person at our September 15th meeting with a pledge in his hand saying that this account exists and this money is earmarked for the Friends of the Libby Museum. He also, and him and, he and Carrie also talked to me about benchmarking and how it could be done to be a little bit more acceptable to the Board of Selectmen. And we looked at some numbers and believed that if that million-dollar donation can come in and they have 150,000 now and another 100,000 pledged already, that they would have 1.25 million dollars in the account and we would have 300,000. We're now at the 70 to 30 threshold of raising money. So with that in play, they would be looking to raise $425,000 a year over the next two years and would understand that the Town, that the Selectmen would not go for a warrant article for more money from the taxpayers of Wolfborough unless they hit their benchmarks in every given year. So if they didn't make their 425,000 in 2022, we don't put out a warrant article. If they don't make it till 2023, then we put out a warrant article so that we follow them as they raise their money first. To me, this becomes a much more acceptable solution.
Anybody else have any comments?
No.
Okay. Any other, other business?
One more. I, I've been riding my bike around this town for 25 years. And for some reason, this year, even more than last year, I've noticed that, and I ride the, the complete stretch of 109A, and the trash on the sides of the roads this year is horrible. Bottles, cans, bags, everything. And I know it's, it's a state road. Does, is the state usually responsible for cleaning it up? It is terrible. It really is. And I've never seen this before. And I just wanted to make a mention, you know, to citizens, guests, and anybody who visits our town, clean up, please. It, it, it's just, you don't, you might not see it when you go by in a car, but go by on a bike at, at 15 miles an hour for 20 miles and you'll see the amount of trash that's on the sides of the roads. It's horrible.
Any other business? Hearing none, I'll start down there with Brian. You want to give committee reports?
We had an energy committee meeting where we talked about the potential for solar and other renewable energies and had a presentation by Warren, the gentleman from Spain, who's, who's the expert in renewable energies and solar. And looking at different ways to add renewable energy into our portfolio. Because we know we're supposed to get to 50% very soon, sooner than we think. I sat in with CIPs with Linda. She's going to take over those. And like I said, I had those, a couple of meetings with the Friends of the Libby because I just needed to know myself. You know, it, it's great that they talk about donors. I wanted to see the donors. I, I want to know who they are. I, I want to know that they're viable. And that changed my whole idea of the project.
We had a police commission meeting last month, this past month. The chief is working on his budget with the new system. Good summer to report. Seems like the Tesla is getting out there and people really enjoy seeing it, as well as the Bike Patrol. It's, it's nice having the officers being able to access the Bridge Falls path and offer a presence at there, out there. And I've noticed they've been more at the beaches with being able to get down to the LNA by bike. It's great.
Okay. I had two CIP meetings. The first one we did was fire and police. A third one was canceled. We didn't have a quorum. And then the last one was the highway and the library. And Dave Ford brought in road upgrades at 1.3. Port Wedland storm water rehab at about 450,000. Dockside commercial docks at 500,000. Then there was money in the Capital Reserve accounts. He's looking at starting a sidewalk Capital Reserve account. He wanted to do some design on a new municipal parking lot out on Feltebread Road by the sewer treatment plant. That was 100,000. 55,000 to start the design on the Bay Street sidewalk. There's a Main Street upgrade from Pickering Corner to Forest Road to start some design work on that for 50,000 and sufficient funding to supplement the construction of Route 28, which New Hampshire D S is going to do. That's 1.5 million. When you take the four, if you take Public Works, which is 4.4 million, you add it to the sewer at 13.2 million, and then you add it to the water at 3.3 million, you're about 21 million in projects coming out of Public Works Sewer and Water. Now, it looks like a big amount. There are a lot of projects he threw out here. And he's taking the, most of these projects to try to get some state and federal funding, as much as 50%. So not all of them are going to go forward, but he's put everything out there and is searching for as much funds to support it. So there will be some, I think, hard decisions coming down the line in the future. But that committee is working really well. I went to two meetings of the library trustees. As you all know, Cindy Scott is retiring and they are starting to search for a new librarian, and I'm going to be on that search committee. I went to the Chamber Social and I've been to meetings of the Friends of Pop Whalen. Dave?
I've had no meetings.
Brad?
Same as Dave. I've had no meetings in the last couple of weeks, so.
Nice, isn't it? Okay. Town Managers report.
First thing I've got for you. If you recall, the design, design charrette from Plan New Hampshire, which was scheduled to start in 2021, was postponed. It's coming up October 22 and 23 of 2021. I have just been presented with an updated MOU. It's the same MOU that was in place previously. I just need the Board of Selectmen to authorize me to sign the current MOU. And this just came in, I believe it was Tuesday afternoon.
So you need a motion from the board to allow the Town Manager to send, sign the charrette MOU?
Correct. With the N H.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The staff has been working on budgets. We've all been working on budgets. We've been working through CIP. One of the items that has been requested, our annual employee appreciation afternoon. Would like to close the offices at noon time on Friday, the 17th. Have a brief afternoon for the employees to get together and, and enjoy an afternoon. We'll be sending this out, notifying everybody that we plan on closing at noon time and serving lunch to staff and hopefully having a little bit of relaxation before we really get into busy season. That's pretty much an FYI. And the only other thing that I, I would like to report, I don't have any details, but one of our employees was in a fairly serious motorcycle accident yesterday. He was flown out out of that helicopter. Don't know any details at this point, but be advised that one of our employees was in fairly serious.
Questions from the press? I got a, a text from Alyssa. She could not get on and, oh, she says she's watching live, but no access to go to meetings, so she won't be able to speak. I'm not quite sure whether it's her. I'm not quite sure whether it's her. I see that Julie Jacobs is on, so it may be Alyssa. So there is no questions from the press. Public input?
Two quick items relevant to Pop Whalen. Looking up the history and so forth, I came across a recent website, Town website informational piece saying when they reopened in 2021, October. And once again, it's advertised as saying Pop Whalen Arena offers the lowest ice rental rates in the state of New Hampshire. Now, that can be looked at two ways, but I don't think it's a good idea to say we're the cheapest around. I mean, it's an enterprise fund. Our goal is to try and equalize it so that we don't have a big tax burden. We talked about this before and I thought the Board felt that it would be nice to take that off of the ad or take that off of our publicity. And I'm not so sure that it is anyway.
Yeah, Linda, the, when the rates were updated, it showed that our rates were kind of in the middle of the path.
Yeah, I don't know why that's up there. I agree.
Yeah.
You know, Jim, you should probably take a look at that being on there. I don't think, it may say it, Suzanne. You can give it to Jim. Jim will, you know, look at. But I, when we look at rates, we are not at the bottom. We were probably seven, eight years ago when Ethan Hippel was here, but since then, we've gone through.
Well, if that's the case, then the, all this stuff has to be updated.
Okay.
That's, that's the one. And then the other one was, I don't know where somebody got the permission from this Board to bill ourselves as Pop Whalen and Arts Center. Until all this comes together, it's not an arts center. And that needs to be, you haven't authorized that. I've listened closely. So that really needs to be stricken.
The Art Center was added when we moved, when we changed the floor of the arena. It was when Ethan Hippel was there and we thought it's going to be four season. We're going to have flower shows. We're going to have all sorts of things that can go on there. And one slight problem, it had no dehumidification or insulation, so it was too hot to run four seasons. But that's when the name changed.
But when Ethan was there, it was a thought. It's still a thought. It's something that may materialize when this financial issue all comes together. It's not an arts center and it shouldn't be billed as an arts center. It isn't four seasons yet. It's not year-round yet, and it should just be Pop Whalen Ice Arena like it's always been. There's nothing official that gave that title as Arts Center, not yet. So I think that it's improper advertisement. Someday, it could be a sports and rec center, not an arts center. And the master plan heritage and arts section does not include the Pop Whalen.
Thank you. We'll take a look.
Well, would the Board consider taking that off until it becomes a, more of a realistic goal?
I'll put it on the, I'll talk to the Town Manager and we'll see what we want to do about it or do nothing. We'll have to wait and see. Any other public input? Hearing none. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All righty.[1683.42]